It started as customary, we always open with a word of prayer, and I've asked Commissioner Dorsey if he would lead us in his prayer at this time.
Let's pray. Our precious heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to live in a free country and in the greatest country on the planet Earth, in the United States of America. We thank you for the many, many women, both past, present, and in the future, who have either fought for or defended our freedoms and continue to do so. We ask that you protect those who are currently in harm's way and keep them safe, and bring them home to their families. And we are very grateful and appreciative of their sacrifices that they make for us so that we can enjoy the freedoms that we have today. We ask that you be with our local community, we're a hurting community right now, with the tragedy that took place yesterday. Lives were lost, and we ask that you be with those families and those small children who have grown, grew up without parents. We ask that you be with the many, many women of law enforcement, EMS, our fire department, our first responders, and everybody who participated yesterday to try to keep everyone safe. And we ask that you continue to be with those folks as they keep us safe and as we go about our day-to-day operations. Of course, in your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Let's all stand and have a pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll call to order our Heart County Board of Commissioners meeting on May 10, 2022. I'd like to welcome each one of you here tonight that's in our building and those that may be watching HTC Channel 3 or Board of Commissioners YouTube channel. So we've got several ways to be transparent and communicate our meetings out to the public. Again, I welcome each one of you here. First order of business, approved agenda, do we have any additions?
I don't have any additions.
You wouldn't need to, under executive session. We've got litigation you want to talk about, if not, I'd like to add personnel.
Okay, I don't have one, we'll add whatever you want to add.
That's right, we talked about litigation thing yesterday, yeah, I'd like to add personnel.
Anything else? If not, can we get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Still move.
Second. We got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, a second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's four of eight. Next on the agenda is approved the minutes for the April 26, 22 meeting. Do we have any additions or corrections to those? If not, can we get a motion to approve?
My commission, we approved the minutes from previous meeting.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Teasley, a second by Commissioner Bennett. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, it's four of eight. Next on the agenda is remarks by anybody, guests, committees, or authorities. Do we have any? Okay, no one's getting. Reports by constitutional officers and department heads? Okay. Y'all will enjoy this kind of meeting, we moving right along here. Next is county administrator's report, our April financial report.
Actually, I'll see the numbers for April. The revenue came in at $1,555,379. Expenses was $1,254,759, which is slightly over the normal of $1,559,446. That leaves us a variance of a negative 199,362. And a year in balance left of $3,001,780,51. Real property, again, this time of year, expected decline below each month because of bulk ups in December, January, come in at $121,771. Lost, this is sales tax for offsetting the military rate, just came in $353,365. EMS fees came in at $95,720. Vehicle title fees came in at $147,475. For the year, we're about 1% under budget on expenses. And we brought in 30% over budget on receivers. Any questions on that, from anybody?
And vehicle tax, that's the highest they've had this year, isn't it? $147?
Yes.
Oh, EMS, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, not EMS, probably.
For that, that was a fluke, I think it was two months together on that one. So yes, that $147 on the vehicle tax is probably the highest we've seen. And included in Mrs. Payne's Creek. For this month, we took in $19,159 in fees. We had $3,104 worth of cancellations. Operating expenses for the month was $10,876, which led us to a net revenue of $5,179 and a year's total revenue at $55,753. That $96,455,65, let's see at the bottom, that's leftover from last year, overbanked last year.
And that's plus the 55?
Sorry?
The 96 is plus the 55, is what that accounts?
Yeah, correct, correct, in the right count. The 55 is this year's awkward.
Right.
And we added one more we report on every month, is building permits. You'll see in April, we put out 13 for new residents. And through the fifth of the month when I was running these, I thought this was kind of caught my attention. The first five days, we issued 24 permits for new residents. And the other permits are things like additions or outside buildings or carpentry. There was five, for a total of 29. You'll see the total was five, seven, 37 new homes. Thirty other type permits, for a total of 67. Any questions on those?
So those numbers really haven't slowed down compared to last year. We just had a lull in January and February.
Right, well, we had that splurge coming in in December, when everybody knew we were going to start inspecting in January. I meant to went back to pull the December numbers and see what they were, but there was a...
Thirty-two.
Yeah, there was a large amount of permits pulled in December before the inspection started.
And there was none in January and six and February, 17 in March. Now we're back wide open again.
And I got one more thing. We had the first meeting on the conference at plan update yesterday. But Adam Selle from Georgia Mountain Regional, he'll be the one that we hired to coordinate this thing. So we're making an official announcement that the process has started tonight, and everybody's invited to participate. There'll be upcoming things you'll see on our website and other change of website and any other website, we mounted them on questionnaires, stuff like that, input from the community on what they want to see, stuff like that. So just kind of be keeping your eyes out for those things. They'll be coming within the next week or two on our website. And other than that, that's about it.
All right, thank you, Terry. As far as chairman's report, I would like to ask the other commissioners if they would join me down here in the front. And we'll ask Mr. Randall Gray if he would come forward.
We've known Mr. Gray here in Hart County, you know, a long time. He has been here a long time. And I know I hear about Terry a lot about, you know, Nancy Hart running to Terry Parkton's house, she had her little issue there with, you can do that, he's here for the right reasons and for the betterment of our county. But the plaque reads, presented with appreciation, Randall Gray, for 45 years plus years of service and dedication to citizens of Hart County. Started out as EMS and then retired this COVID-bоль. And Randall, we appreciate what you've done. Yeah.
Okay, we'll move on to commissioner support, District One.
I don't have anything this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we'll move on to District Two, Commissioner Teasley.
Like Joey said during his prayer, I appreciate, I know like that incident that went on yesterday in Hart County, appreciate our law enforcement, first responders, EMS, and everybody was on the scene out there, from troopers, all law enforcement. And the only other call I got was about Sunday afternoon up there on Bowman Hill. I think traffic got real bad up there around the zoo up there. Other than that, that's all I got.
Okay, District Five, Commissioner Dorsey.
Couple of things, I do want to echo those remarks that Commissioner Teasley just said about all those who came out yesterday. That was just an example of how great our emergency services work together. You never know what you're getting into when those calls go out. And there was a lot of people who dropped everything they had to be there to assist those folks. I just wanted to give a shout out to those folks, especially the Sheriff's Department, GSP, and all their efforts. I also want to make mention of a letter to the editor that was in last week's paper that references a subdivision changes, it was written by Charlene Fields. Reason I bring this up is we've been working on a subdivision draft ordinance, and it's, I don't really know that I'd call it a draft. It hasn't even been public, I mean, proofread by any of us. And there's a lot of errors and things that aren't quite right in this letter to the editor. I think this was motivated to get folks riled up, I guess is the right word to say. But, you know, when you look at what's in here, she references current subdivision regulations, two parcels greater than a half an acre, setback requirements, the 20-foot, I know that was mentioned, but we haven't put 20-foot in any of the ordinances. I think it is in here, but I think that's a typo. We talked about 100-foot wide lots, and there's reasons for that. The purpose of this is not to penalize anyone, it's to manage growth. And if anybody's here, I think you would agree that people who are in Hart County come to Hart County for its small rural atmosphere, the agricultural-based community, and people want it to stay this way. I mean, we get calls all the time. And if somebody wants to see this become a Brazelton area or Jackson County area, I don't see it happening. This board has every right to manage growth regardless of what's been put out there in some emails and other things, a mail-out that was done to lakefront property owners. You know, we had issues with the previous subdivision ordinance, and we've tried to fix some of those. And there's copies of this thing that's floating around, that should have never been released. I don't know how they got them, but I know there was five copies that were here. Each of the four commissioners had one. And then the county attorney's office had one, and then later on, the water authority got one. But nobody knows where this one comes out. And I've seen a picture of this draft ordinance that is out there. So somebody released it, it's public record, that's fine, there's no problem there. But whoever released it should have made sure that everybody understood that, number one, this has not even been voted on by the board. So why do you get everybody stirred up? There's an agenda here. Why do we talk about things that may not even happen? We put in different levels of subdivisions trying to make it easier to follow. We're also going to have a checklist at the end of this, once we're complete. This board has spent a tremendous amount of time going through this subdivision ordinance. And, you know, there was a letter that was sent out that talked about the Board of Commissioners doesn't have any experience developing property or anything like that. Sure, we may not develop property, but we've all had real estate, owned real estate, sold real estate. But we have references, and we also have resources out there that we can go to for advice. We don't have to necessarily reinvent the wheel. Hart County Board of Commissioners is a member of the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, and three of us were at the state annual meeting at the end of April. And this is a common problem throughout this whole state, it's not just Hart County. So even though we're amateurs, and we don't do this for a living, that doesn't mean we can't put together an ordinance, we have every right to do that. And I want to just leave with this, Noah was an amateur when he built the ark. The Titanic was built by professionals, and we all know what happened there. So we have every right to do what we've done. So that's kind of close.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dorsey. Yeah, I would also like to echo the fact that our law enforcement and all the state agencies and everyone that worked on this issue we had here in Hart County yesterday, I appreciate their service to this community. All right. First under old business is a short-term rental ordinance, second reading. And I've invited Officer Brandon Pierce, if you would come up at this time, he's with DNR. I know some people had some questions from, as far as the core side of things, as far as enforcement of laws there also. But this is Brandon Pierce, he's with our DNR here in Hart County, and we appreciate his service and his willingness to come and speak to us tonight. I meant to get him a copy of the ordinance, I didn't, but what kind of issues are you seeing on the lake, the short-term rental problems that we might could adjust to our ordinance to make you, so you're able to enforce laws here?
I got you. First off, I want to say I appreciate you inviting me and wanting me to come and speak to you. And hopefully I can give you some information that will help you. For us on the lake, you know, it used to be during the wintertime, many boats would stay off. But now we see pretty much year-round that people is coming and enjoying the natural resources that we have here. As far as the rental houses, over the past years, you know, I've seen them, people would come visit and then leave. And then as the summer comes in, they would get more and more visitors, and they would stay longer periods of time. But ever since COVID come and everybody decided to buy a boat and wanted to get out there on the water, people are renting these houses out for longer periods of time now. And we see in more and more alcohol, you know, the biggest complaint that we have on the lake is the 100-foot rule. Does anybody know what that is? Yes, sir, I bet we went three last weekend. So what a 100-foot rule is, is once you're within 100-foot of an object, whether it be a dock, anchor boat, person in the water, you got to be at idle speed. Well, a lot of our visitors don't realize, you know, really what a 100-foot is. And so they just plow through and in turn tear up people's docks, cost a ton of money, and it just aggravates, you know, the people who live there. And it would anybody. I mean, so, but yeah, they don't, they really don't know. The Corps, everybody calls every year about boogies being put out. You know, there's certain things that the Corps engineers designates to place a boogie. And that is at ramps and bridges and stuff like that. But these marco's that we have on the lake, you just can't throw a boogie out there anywhere. It's got to be designated and everything. So that throws that out, which in turn leaves us. I'm one of two that work this county. But within our work section, we have eight officers. You know, Hart Lake is a big area, I mean, it really is. So my territory that I try to cover is from the dam to Payne's Creek, or I-85. And then from I-85 to Younge Dam is our 123 bridge is the other that we do. So it's a lot of territory to cover, so we can't leave it to be in all places at once. We'd have to do our best, but yes. It makes us feel good when we can at least handle a complaint the way the landlord wants to. But other than that, what, coming into this kind of...
I understand.
So what is the ordinance is that...
We're basically, it's basically for disturbing the peace and disorderly conduct, that sort of thing. It's nothing new that we're trying to do, but we're just enforcing it on these VRBOs and Airbnb's, the short-term rental.
Got you.
And we've heard complaints of, you know, 10 boats coming into one dock and tying up and blocking the whole cove, I mean, that's sort of some of the complaints. Y'all have any other complaints that involve the Corps?
Constant 100-foot movement that paid no attention. People on waveboards, canoes, they don't care. If you get children in the water, they don't care.
Yes, ma'am, I'm very aware, and for us, that is, it's a constant battle. But, you know, each time that I encounter that, it's, I'm not really a bully beyond, but I mean, I make sure that that person understands the reason that the whole, everything is happening. The reason I stopped them, the reason landlord complained, and what they're doing is totally wrong because it is endangering public safety. So, yeah, I do definitely understand that. As far as the ordinance go, we, as state officers, we cannot enforce county ordinances, we only can enforce state law. But that don't mean that I can't gather information and hand it over to somebody who can. The noise, yes, I deal with that quite a bit. Being right there at the marina, you know, we got several restaurants within that area. People like to play their music and hoop and holler and stuff like that. So I can definitely handle that and deal with that and all that stuff. And that's the new one, where are the blocking the codes at?
The complaint that we got was from Payne's Creek up there, which I'm sure it happens in other areas on Lake Horrible too. But tell them a little bit about the problems that y'all have up there.
Brandon, we live on a cove near Payne's Creek, and we now have two short-term rentals on our small cove that's near us. And before the rentals came, you know, we could paddle or kayak swim out there and not really, you know, feel unsafe. But what happens is every weekend, every week, and they really are short-term rentals, not, they're usually, you know, a long weekend or so. So people are rotating through, and they don't know about safety on the water. Their jet skis or their boats, they are just tearing up and down the cove. And we don't really know the process for governing them on the water. And I think that would be helpful if you could tell us, you know, when we're seeing these boats that have been on, what can we do?
Yes, ma'am. With me, I'll be glad to give you my phone number. You can call the sheriff's office, they can get in touch with me. I mean, whatever way that you feel that this, not really an emergency or a non-emergency, you can call, you know, like the sheriff's office, they can get in touch with me. And I'd be glad to get educated people, and unfortunately sometimes you got to do it by citations and stuff, but it only takes one or two of them before they gather. But as you say, it's turned over every weekend, so it's a brand-new, fresh set of boats that you got to deal with. But word will spread, and especially if I can get in there and stay, you know, an hour or two, whatever needed, all day, you know, maybe that will show the black enough where people stop doing that. But I'll be glad to hit you. I mean, I try to hit the hot spots because that's all I can really do. Cleveland ramp, I don't know if y'all know about that, right there, it's a trussel that leads to it. Anyway, that is a hotspot. Every year, I at least get fifty or so kids happening there. And a lot of us fast people, they come and visit tournaments and stuff. And it ain't, it ain't all bad, but they still blowing through there. And when, especially when summer comes, the water goes down, it gets narrower and narrower as summer progresses. But in the wintertime, it gets bad because they can go in there. But anyway, it only takes about now, about a week's worth of working in there, and it starts to mention, people are starting to be unhappy, they start sunbathing on the docks again, and they wave at you instead of sunning their back, and doing other stuff. So, you know, it's, but it don't take long to settle a fault, you know. But I'd be glad to give you any information.
That would be great.
Yes, ma'am.
What about you, Prue, to approve the DNR regulations and the short-term rental agreements?
Well, we actually don't have to have them in there for him. Well, we actually don't have to have them in there for him to be able to enforce it.
So, the regulations understand?
Okay, okay, I understand. Yeah, we could...
Posted.
Yeah.
Required posted.
Yeah, we could do that, so that they, that's a good point.
Are there any rules on how many boats can be tied up to a dock? Because we, you know, are proximity to campground. Last summer, we had an issue with, maybe there were six people at the rental, but their friends stayed at the campground. And so, they actually used the property and this dock as their hangout place. And so, there were literally, you know, eight to 10 boats tied together. Kids were jumping off the dock into the boats. It was just an accident waiting to happen.
So, they was using their dock, and they rented plus a private owner or...
Just rented.
Just rented dock. With that, no, ma'am. I mean, you know, given that they have, they have paid, you know, for that weekend or whatever, and as long as it ain't impeding traffic or a, you know, a public safety thing, they can have as many boats there. Personally, I wouldn't. It's, I mean, whatever the slips that the dock has, that's how many boats should go in there. But, you know, if they wanna stack them up and then beat and bang and then get tore up, you know, that has to be...
Well, I think education makes it be, you know, a lot of people, it's probably, probably want to do the right thing, but...
And you're very correct. People, most people want to do the right thing, but the influence that we're getting in now is like from the leader. Like, the leader is kind of, is born of our side. I mean, we always have issues. But people are coming here because it's a family ward in the lake. You can enjoy yourself. You don't have to have, deal with jet skis and traffic and stuff like that all the time. We see more and more of that, and it's becoming a media leader. But, yes, the inexperience is what's causing a lot of it. Most people don't know how to boat, and it's the educational part that's given by material and us that have reduced the complaints and stuff that we get. And the sheriff's on that.
I have a question. When you have a place right now for like any type of state certification or like voter certification for people that are coming to visit? I mean, do you require that? I used to live in Lake Tahoe, and in order to get on their lake, like, could they have voter rentals like that? They would have to go to like the voter center. They would have to sign a paper saying, "We follow these rules." They pay, you know, $20 to get a little sticker that goes on their jet ski or on their boat or a little card, something like that. I mean, because we have to be able to transmit the information to them so that they understand, you know, about the safety.
I understand. Yes, ma'am. Our law that we come up with, and I can't remember exactly when it was passed. It's been a couple of years now. Anyway, actually, July 1, 1998, everybody born after that is required to have a voter education course on the person to operate a vessel. So, they go through all that, the online courses and all. And we actually teach them in class when the COVID happened.
And do we have anything specific to what the rules and regulations are really hard on? Just curious. Like, you know, some lakes, you go out and you have to get a sticker for like muscles or whatever. Do you have anything that says, you know, who's gonna know what 100-foot rule? Is that something that's specific to Lake Horrible?
No, ma'am, that's statewide.
Statewide for those?
Yes, ma'am. But see, Horrible is different because it is split by two states.
Right.
So, and actually, South Carolina, I actually went to 100-foot this year. There was a 50-foot. So, it was quite different. It's a gray area there, and it's harder for us because you gotta either be on Georgia's side or South Carolina's side in order to, whatever violation it's due. So, by being a mayor in our, us here in Georgia, it makes it easier. So, everybody should understand that it's 100-foot.
I'm just trying to figure out a way that, you know, because I'm sure we have people that come from like Alabama and Tennessee, you know, there's been a lot more coming in. So, I'm like, how do we relay this information to that?
I understand that, but putting it on a sticker, that pays so much.
That's a good example.
I get what you're saying, I do. But we got boat books that we hand out, and then we put it at Walmart and stuff like that. It's available to the folks, you know, and having, we don't really have meetings every, you know, so often. It's just kind of by education of, if you mess up, learn this about, you know, type of deal. But, yeah, I do get what you're saying, but as far as, other than the handout or the little boat books that we give, that's the rules and regulations on what's at stake.
So, if somebody were to come out here from Tennessee, where would they know where to get that information? Or would they just walk to their boat and tell you?
The problem is, is trying, whether they wanna try to find it or not. You know, it's, everything's online now, or they can word of mouth, I mean, talk to the locals. But it's up to them whether they wanna do that or not. You know, and they can contact us, on that or office, whatever it may be. But nine times out of 10, they just don't want us to boat, and we'll see how it goes.
Do you have a question?
Is there a, do you have like a YouTube video or anything that ever been done? So, you know, like a document, 10 minutes kind of, this is the thing that you can know about the other safety and laws on Lake Horrible?
Yes, ma'am. We have some on there, and actually, the Corbin's Beer does a media thing here. And we try to go and speak to them as well, and that's all that's kind of coming up.
So, that's something that can be linked to Airbnb rental law, that, you know, that we don't know, that we require, just have to watch it, so that at least it's there, the information's there. Just not yet.
All right.
Also, the catch call is offered training too, sometimes on the lake.
Yes, sir, they do sometimes. More of it happens on the South Carolina side than it does on Georgia, but they do offer it as well.
Ms. Walker, just...
Just wanted to be able to like the rentals agreement, what's the question? Is it they rent the cabins or whatever they do? That you have to understand the three bits? And if you do, in the value of the three bits, then the consequences, you know, you have consequences? Do you have that?
No, ma'am, we don't have anything like that.
Did you have it, or did you create something?
Well, I think that's what we're working on here as far as the ordinance. They will have an application and a license fee and all these things that you're speaking of with rules and what can happen there. That's all gonna be contained in this ordinance. The main thing I had Mr. Pierce here for was kind of explain what he could enforce on the lake and what he cannot enforce on the lake. And to put a face with some of these folks that live on the lake to know this is your guy right. This is, this is the guy you need as far as having problems on the lake.
Did I hear you correctly when you said you can enforce state law but not county? It's like you know.
Do I?
County?
Yes, sir.
County ordinance?
But that's what I was saying, they couldn't enforce. I could not enforce, but I'm glad to take it to Mason there and get it to somebody who can. And I will.
You can enforce it, but the sheriff.
Yes, sir.
So, the other thing with you is, you know, most voters, we're talking, you know, whether you're a voter, most experienced voters know what to do. Whether you come from Tennessee, Texas, whatever, right? I mean, whether it's 100-foot rule or 100-foot rule or, you know, no way it sounds, I mean, we all know what that is. So, that just means you're not gonna answer on there.
Respect plays a big role, and it seems that respect has went out of order a long time. You know, and it's, you know, I kick somebody and I ask them why. They just say, "Well, I just want to," you know, type of deal. I mean, that's not the way to do it. I mean, I would raise that way, and most people wouldn't, but I don't know. They just seem to wanna do it either. But you're right, experience plays a big role in the voting. I mean, you got to have, you know, just go buy a boat, put it on the water, and if you know how to, all the rules and regulations, and actually how to operate the boat like you should in the same time.
For years, the states require any new boat sales. They have a license.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They just go to the boat, and you tell them, "They gotta bring the boat." Right? They need to hit the boat in the water, and you should be able to operate the boat.
Okay. All right. Mr. Pierce, we do appreciate you coming and speaking with those folks tonight. They've been, you had a question?
What if you take the movie of the boat with their ID numbers? Will you report it?
Oh, yes, sir, any.
Slide 8, you're based on that?
Yes, sir. The registration on the boat helps. I'm not gonna say from front view, but everyone's got a camera now to take a picture of. And, but anything that you haven't identified that boat and what it's doing, that certainly plays a big role. But yes, if you can, a lot of people have a binoculars sitting next to the window, and they're looking at the registration numbers and they're telling, and I can look that up and know exactly who it is. And if I don't catch them, actually do that, I know where they've been, and so I can define. And anyway, local, you know, I'll call my own adult. But, but yes, many information that you can get, but definitely got those. Yes, ma'am.
These places that rent boats during a kind of requirement?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, they...
They have to go through their old list. So, they go over live checks, they watch videos, they do all of that. And every, all the, what we talked about, it's all covered in that class. They are required to do that as the motion.
So, if somebody comes in and wants to rent a boat, they have to take this safety before they can leave with that boat?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All right, Ms. Walker.
Are there deterrents that you tell the crew, the crew's got a red, and they've got those blue nils on, or like, things like, you know, free say? You put stuff like that, flood them in the water, or, I don't know.
I'll, I'll say it's a candy. It's kind of a sweet shot, but I will say, if the Corbin's Niggers comes, they're gonna jerk it out.
Like, before we do your time, so you put it on your doll?
Yes, sir, doll. You can, but people may or may not pay attention to it. But anything that's not supposed to be there, it's gonna be a boat. And that's what I was saying, you know, there's only certain places that's designated for a booby. You know, so, I ain't one of them, and say, "No," I ain't gonna say, "Yeah," just a way to...
Do you have your camera on your dock? Say, "Spawning your camera back."
Oh, yes, ma'am. Unless you were docked.
I was wondering what we can do to help, yeah.
No, I tell y'all what advice I have, because over the years, we're seeing more and more people that's getting old on the docks and still and all this stuff. I talked to a gentleman the other day, which he was from South Carolina, and the difference is still the same. He have all the fishing rods and every, a piece of tack on the end, then put them, so, and that makes twice that they've done that. So, now, he's with Guts and Cameras, two separate ones, so, at least, so he can see who's doing it and give it over to you.
Not the deterrents?
Yes, sir. Most people don't like smiling, so they see, try to have a smile on their hand.
All right. Mr. Pierce, we do appreciate you being here tonight, and we appreciate what you do for our county and, well, the state of Georgia. I'm sure you get into other counties too, but we, like I said, our main purpose was so we could put a face with who you need to be talking to as far as law enforcement on the lake part. I know we've had complaints about what was going on there. So, I hope everybody understands now that what he can and cannot enforce, and I'm there, they're there for us, okay, for law enforcement, and we really do appreciate it. Thank you for coming tonight.
Yes, sir, you're welcome.
Well...
Finally, I'm gonna hang around until that, it's all said and done. If you got any more questions or feedback, thank you. Whatever information that I can give you, I'll be right back.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Brandon.
Thank you, Brandon. All right, we're at second reading. Are there any other corrections or anything that we wanted to change in here before we go on with the second reading to get this as a checkered read?
I went back through it, and all I saw was they got the penalties right. And outside of that, I think everybody was in agreement last week.
All right.
Well, there's still a few things I think we gotta fill in.
Is this about the ordinance?
Ma'am?
Because I have a short-term rental.
Uh-huh.
I run the first floor of my property.
If you would, come up and stand up. So, the folks on TV can hear and see you.
So, I live in Reed Creek, and I have a rental. I rent out the first floor of my home. And so, a lot of these things in here, I'm not sure how they would pertain to me. For instance, I have a three-bedroom house. I have a fourth room that doesn't have a closet. Does that mean I only can have four cars in my driveway? I had renters a few weeks ago. Four women came from four different locations. I have two cars myself that would put six cars on my driveway. I mean, they all fit. I'm not parking on the road. I have two trailers on my property. So, I just feel like a lot of this needs to be structured for different kinds of rentals.
How long were they staying?
They stayed for a weekend.
Okay, so if it's less than 30 days, it would apply?
Okay, that's what I'm saying. That's gonna be an issue because I live in the residence too. Like, I have family coming from Memorial Day. I also have renters. Does that mean I can only have six people?
You would have to comply to this ordinance, that would be correct? You'd have to register? You should be registered already with the county if you're doing that. You should be submitting taxes to the county.
I am, taxes. But, I mean, I thought this didn't even go into place yet, into effect.
It hasn't. Well, by law, you're supposed to already be doing the taxes, what you said you were doing.
The taxes I'm doing, yeah.
But this is, once we have the third reading, after the third reading, we'll set a date typically when we vote on it or when it goes into effect, and that's...
Well, that's what I'm saying, that maybe some of it needs to be altered for certain circumstances. I mean, I'm not gonna limit my family coming because I have a couple of rentals. No, I'm not renting, but they're on, in my residence.
So, it's irrelevant.
Yeah.
This is only if you're renting. But if you're renting to a third party, then it would apply. But if it's family coming and you're not charging them, it doesn't apply.
So, if my family's on my portion of the house and I have renters in the rental portion?
It would apply only to your renters.
Okay. So, my renters could only bring two vehicles, for instance?
They rent?
And then, I have a room that has bunk beds. So, now, you're basically saying I can only have two people in that room? I mean, I just feel like there's a lot of things here that should be open for discussion and maybe...
Well, that's why we have these hearings.
Right, but you just told me I'm supposed to be following this.
No.
No.
Okay.
It hadn't been followed last year.
The only thing that you should be following is you should be submitting the sales tax.
I am. I'm doing it through Airbnb, so they automatically do. So, I already have that taken care of. But, I mean, that's just, you know, I think, and I emailed Walter Gordon and told him my circumstances are different than the typical renter, rental. I mean, I don't anticipate I'll have problems. I live right upstairs, so I don't allow parties and excessive people like that. I'll kick them out because I'm right there. But that's all. I just wanted to mention a couple of things.
And as you push them in, maybe you'll clear them out. You're talking about you had the six cars. You, under this particular thing, the car count would be, would apply to be rented?
Okay, so two, so like, in that situation, I have two bedrooms in my rental. So, they should have only had two cars. I mean, they had four because they all came from different locations. I mean, I find that disappointing for someone renting, you know, they're coming from four different areas of the state or, you know, other states.
And it's like, wasn't your family's car?
Right, I know. I'm not talking about my family, but the renters I had a few weekends ago.
The problem that we have is, you may have, how much land do you have? You don't mind messing?
I have an acre.
Okay, you have an acre. A lot of these lake lots are a lot smaller than an acre.
I feel like if I'm not sending cars out onto the street, then that shouldn't be an issue.
And to be in a long distance, unless we get a complaint of car blocking the street, we can't... we can't really.
We're not going to.
Right.
But that's, that's part of the issue is the difference in the size of lots, the width of the streets. Some of these like roads that go down to lake houses are very narrow and you get cars parked on the side of the road. We can't get emergency vehicles down, down there and it just, it's caused a lot of problems. And that's why the numbers are what we've come up with.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Regarding the letter to the editor, thanks for letting everybody know about that, Joe, because they do need to be aware of it.
All right, so are you speaking on, on the, on the short-term rental? Is that what we're speaking about?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Um, so who's going to be inspecting these houses to see if they meet the guidelines that y'all put in here?
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement, okay. And would y'all consider changing the responsible person being less than 25 because at 21 you can buy alcohol? I mean, I don't understand why you can't rent a house that's, why you gotta be 25? I got grown boys that are married with kids and they're 24, 25. This is going to hurt a lot of the investors that bought property in Hart County. I think we need to have some rules.
It was, it was 21, uh, last week, I thought.
This is 21 in it now.
It says that local contact person shall be 21 years old and then you go over to the person that's going to be renting has to be at least 25.
I think that would be, I think that would be.
They have to be 25?
No.
They're different, they're different for different houses. I looked at that, yeah, VRBO and Airbnb. The homeowner, a lot of times, requests what age they have to be, so.
So y'all are going to enforce this at age?
But 25?
Mm-hmm.
What was that for discussion?
Seems like a lot of stuff you're going to have to be taking care of. There's, the person has to reside in Hart County?
The contact person does, not the owner.
And they have to be available within two, 24 hours, seven days a week, within two hours of being notified?
Yes.
That's ridiculous. It's going to be hard to do. Are y'all going to be able to enforce this on, um, waterfront property that's in the city limits?
No.
No? Good.
They're big city.
So are you saying on the septic systems, that's everybody's got to get their septic tank inspected before they can pass the application on 6I?
If they already have a home and it's been inspected by the state, I mean.
They don't get it inspected unless you're selling your house. You don't have to get your septic inspected for any reason. It's expensive. $450 to get a septic tank inspected. Then you gotta pump it, beneath pump.
The septic tank, you should be aware that it's filthy.
I agree with that. They're saying it's got to be inspected before they can rent it.
I don't think you should have to have a little inspection on that as long as it's functioning, because if it's got a problem, your renters are going to tell you anyway.
That's right.
That's right.
Page six, number five, definition of a bedroom, meaning a house in Hart County meets any kind of code. We ain't never been inspected. That's, y'all gotta reword that. Bedroom ceilings, uh, off, off of windows, loss. I know you're trying to limit the goal of the number of people renting the house, I get that, but. Walter ran through this thing so quick last week and then y'all called it a first read? I don't think it's fair to the public, we're just not getting a read it. There's a lot of Airbnb people out there that are going to be affected and they rely on this income to pay their payment. First read should be denied.
We didn't have the first read. You and him.
My first read is, is bad.
Your first read official.
Okay.
Those that don't beat 20, say 21 or 25?
I think 21 is fine. I mean, like I said, you can drink whiskey.
I don't know, too.
Well, I buy whiskey, whatever. I'm not a whiskey drinker, so I don't know.
Well, like I said, a lot of the contracting companies and the homeowners, a lot of times sets the age of, uh, of rental, but, you know, if, if they say you can rent at 21 and we say you can't rent till 25, well then that could possibly throw them out of a rental, whereas, you know, so, yeah. And, but if we got it at 21 and they say 25, then it's going to be at 25.
That's it. I mean, because it's their property and they can do what they want to do with it.
I have no problem making it 21.
I don't either.
Do I?
I don't either.
All right, we'll make it.
I thought earlier.
All right, back to the septic tank thing, are we going to strike that?
Well, I took that, I mean, that it had been inspected.
Uh, correct. You got, that's, that's getting a clearance from the health department that the septic system has been approved, that's all it is.
You made one of the bills, when the person was off, did you prove it was inspected?
Prove that it was inspected, I guess.
Do you know how long it takes for the year-long rental thing? I mean, we're not talking about something that could be done five days, but they get to get their license for the whole year, they gotta be done once, once. I know it's a time to inspect.
So they don't have to do an inspection?
Why would offer that?
It's already been done if it was put in and inspected by the health department.
I'm tasked with that, I'm tasked with that, so the next, we all say you're going to be all inspected, we're going to go up and inspect these houses to make sure they meet the code, these papers.
Our code enforcement officer, who's inspecting?
They're not inspecting the house itself.
I know, I said it now, I'm talking about back to all the, all the guidelines that this house has to meet. The loss of bedrooms, the ceiling heights, the fire extinguishers, the parking lot, the testing.
That's, that's state coven.
Who's on paper for that inspection?
I don't know, but I haven't.
Have you ever gone to sign a petition that they are meeting those things? You don't want that.
We're signing that affidavit.
So it won't be inspected.
No.
And back to this septic tank thing, it concerns me because it's probably 30% of the houses in Hart County that's not on, in the health department's records.
Are they being rented as VRBO?
I don't know, I'm satisfied there's some of them running that lake it is.
Well, it may be, but.
Well, there's no doubt, them houses built up there, there was no records, they was putting in septic tanks, digging holes, circles and everything else, but.
Well, I, I'm going to say for the last 23, 24 years that they should, it's a pretty good records.
Well, it's that, but there's a whole, there's a lot of them still there, a bit long before that.
I mean, and even before that, because back when I had my license, Gary Helmut was a sticker for details.
I remember Gary.
Yeah, I do, too.
And Joe Cooper was another one.
Oh, yeah.
Five bedroom houses, three bedroom system zone.
That's illegal.
And they don't, they're permanent.
I just think, oh, strike that septic tank, because if they got a problem with septic tank, people ain't going to stay nowhere.
That's right.
I would. You'd be paying for my motel.
All right. Any other?
So can I just make sure of that quickly?
Yes.
What you said, that they have to come in and tell them that they're, that they do meet all those qualifications?
Correct.
And they meet the ceiling heights, they need the bedrooms, they need the.
And you'll sign that affidavit and then if you found in violation, our code enforcement officer will.
Violation of law, just, just.
Because if you get it reported, you will get reported.
That's violation of the state law.
Five hundred and seventy-two.
Falseified government document is a violation of the state law. And then we got, this could get done.
Y'all need to read all this stuff.
All right. We're going to change that to age 21 is able to, um, light a contract to rent a, uh, short-term rental. Any other? No? Yes, sir?
Y'all, nobody knows me here, I'm real new to the county, but I just was sitting here talking, listening to the parking lot, um, or the parking situation. You know, I'm a young man and me and my wife often use Airbnb and Virgo, we've used all of them and we love that particular service. I would love to see the parking situation changed to what can fit on my actual property versus, you know, I agree with Commissioner Dorsey that if the lot is extremely small and one or two cars, I have a friend of mine that he owns a house, you couldn't fit five cars if you wanted to, because it was, you would have to back way up and get into the right-of-way. I was a fireman for five and a half years. Access is extremely important to those houses, be it a fire or emergency situation. I totally agree. But in this woman's particular case, or anybody's case that has a lot that is large enough to fit six cars, I feel like you're severely limiting the people that want to rent based on the amount of cars that can be there, because if you have a bunk or if you have multiple sleeping areas, you know, you might have three or four different people coming from different situations, like what she said. And instead of having a one flat thing that says, hey, only one car, the one bedroom, why don't you make it where in the situation that you cannot fit those vehicles on that property, that you can't, it's got to fit on the property. And this, I personally would think it would be up to her whether the car would be in the yard.
Well, let's, let's.
Her grass.
Let's back, let's back up a little bit, okay? If you have the room, if you have the room to put 10 cars there, if you have the room to put 10 cars there and you're not on the right-of-way and you're not on somebody else's property, who's going to call and complain about that?
Well, I'm just concerned that it's in the ordinance.
Right, yes.
It's a violation, if the neighbor.
But we're not going out counting cars in everybody's parking lot. Well, the neighbor.
Well, he's got too many cars. You know, you're in violation and that's not fair to the person they got.
You're out for a year.
But keep in mind, if the property owners would do the right thing, we wouldn't even be discussing this today. Now, hold on a minute, we've sat here and we've heard the horror stories that these people have brought to us that you guys probably haven't heard. They've got a lot of money tied up and if people would just do the right thing, we wouldn't have to do what we're having to do. Our hands, we've been forced into a corner to do something.
And I think with a building, it's a good start, but you can't hold the homeowner responsible for the actions of a nucklehead. I mean, they don't, they don't know this guy's background, a girl's background, if they rent the house, they can do a thorough background check and find out if the guy who's, uh, you know, rent the house and party animals, they don't know that upfront. They know that they're renting out, uh, you know, their property, they don't.
That's the point.
Well, okay, I mean, think about that, I mean, no one knows, it could be the nicest guy in the world to be a nucklehead. We don't know.
Well, we don't love a nucklehead.
Why not, but you can't, because we think of two.
Okay, yes, sir.
Eleven pages of rules is too extensive on property, there's like 60 Airbnbs in Hart County.
All I'm saying is that you should make.
No, you're wrong, about 200.
I agree with Commissioner Dorsey, about 100 percent. You should make a cutout that own properties that have the available room, they should be able to fit as many vehicles on their yard if they want it in the yard, but again, your ordinance says it's got to be, can't be in the right-of-way, totally agree with all that, totally. But for somebody that has a four-bedroom house, I bet everybody in this whole building has a car, a separate car, and if you've got family coming in, even if it's a family event and nobody's having any trouble whatsoever, they're not going to be a, a, a nucklehead renter. You might have six cars coming in and if they have a lot large enough, I think there should be an adjustment that says, hey, listen, if your lot's big enough and they can fit on that property without impeding the neighbor or impeding the right-of-way of emergency vehicles, then by all means it can be there.
All right.
Well.
The other problem with this, just on the parking thing, is there's issues with boat trailers, because you've got people who are bringing boats with them. Uh, it's just some of the things that are happening that we've hearing about and, and it takes up more room.
But if it fits on the person's property that is, is the rental and it's not impeding traffic or impeding emergency vehicle or on another property owner's property, there should be, there, if they can fit 100 trailers on Island 66 acres down on Nancy Hart, I said a lot of vehicles on there. Okay, obviously I know this isn't the ordinance, but what I'm getting at is some people have larger lots on the land, you know, on the lake and this is not, we stayed at the place, but they probably got four acres, they could fit 100 cars on there. Not what they want to do, not what anybody here wants to do, but the point is that if you've got a lot that is large enough, there shouldn't be a restriction. The restriction should be it can't be off of your own lot.
What's the number of people in the rental? So that means if you, what, 20, 20 cars on your lot, you have 20 people?
No, because Airbnb has, um, all these particular things that says how many people can stay in the house if they're, if you can't fit 20 people in one room. So if you've only got a shop, small place that you can rent, then you only going to have so many spots that can be slept. And so Airbnb sets the rules, you know, the house can have six people, house can have eight people, whatever, whatever the case is, but there are some, I know there's some houses on this lake that can fit 20 people, that's got tons of bedrooms, they might have a small lot. People should still, 20 people should still be to stay there, but I agree that the parking, if those 20 people have 20 cars and it gets out blocking the road, then by all means there needs to be a violation, there needs to be the enforcement coming out saying, listen, y'all got to move these cars, but if the lot is big enough to hold the trailers, to hold the cars without impeding traffic or somebody else's property, I think that's that person, property owner's own property and they won't be able to park a car in the front yard if they want to park a car. And the ordinance says it can't be parked in the grass, it's got to be parked on gravel or a paved road. And I, I just think that is excessive when it comes to.
Okay. All right, we'll look at the parking, okay?
Sure.
We'll look at it. All right, can we get a motion to take this as a second reading?
Um, no, not really. I think you need to have a meeting, like bring in, I mean, I didn't get any alert, I'm not paying taxes. I didn't get any notification except from John that this meeting was taking place. I took it from my staff to email Walter Gordon to get a draft. I mean, what about all the other Airbnb and Virgo, um, you know, honors? Should we have reminded?
Well, this is not our first night discussing this.
This has been going on for se, two months.
Come to move out.
No, we've been discussing this for a while. It started back in October of last year.
There's been complaints on that, but it's a special about what you were going to do, what the change is going to be, the first time it came out, the last two to that.
No, no.
No.
No, 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 no.
Okay, let's, I don't see no reason why we can't have the second reading. I mean.
It's going to affect.
The law of property and district attorney represented, he's got tons of lakefront property.
And he's not going to be represented, not now.
He's, he's, and he's got most of the.
So we should shut down the whole county?
No, we need to make these rules less restrictive because you're going to, y'all also divest in your property.
No, okay, listen.
People coming here and buying property.
Do we have a motion to take this as a second reading?
I'm going to make a motion, we take it as a second reading and then before we adopt it, we will review it for the third and final.
And we will look at the parking.
Yep.
All right, you going to get a second? I'll, I'll make a second. All right, any other discussion?
So these changes, like what some of these folks in here are talking about, we don't look at it, and-
We changed an age to twenty-one.
Right.
We've done, done that tonight.
Right.
Struck out their septic tank inspections, but I'm, I'm ten to agree with some, I don't care, that parking thing, you gotta put a number on that, you, you know, I don't go along, you don't know that.
All, all this, all this motion is doing is moving us to closer to getting it in place. We have to have another reading, which will probably be at the next board meeting, where we will discuss these things again, and there's an opportunity to make changes. Just because we're taking this as a second reading, nothing is in stone. Ordinance requires us to do three readings before we can actually adopt an ordinance, and it has to be at a regularly scheduled board meeting, which means it would be either May 24th or sometime in June.
Now, do we have any way about getting a word out, Commissioner?
We advertise a meeting every, every video.
Our meeting package is on our agenda, I mean, on our website.
I understand that, but we need, I think we need more than that.
I would ask, because I'm not gonna be here the 24th, that we do push this out into June, and if we wanna have a work session, I can be here later.
I think we need a work session or two on this thing for these people.
But I have no problem taking this as a second reading.
I wanna be fair to both sides.
I do, too. That was what I was insinuating.
It's public record. It's public, yeah. June the 14th.
It's public today, though.
Charlie, this is a second, the motion's-
It's not printed, or we can read it on the, on the internet today. I asked Kim Ford two weeks ago, she said it was the first reading, then she said it wasn't the first reading.
Okay, we're planning on the third reading, June the 14th. All right, all right, we'll take a vote now. All in favor?
The third reading will be June the 14th.
Right.
And then there'll be adoption date after that.
That'll be part of it.
All right, and next on the agenda is 12B Whitworth details discussion.
Basically, it's kinda to fucking know about the Whitworth situation, which we're still running in. They don't have enough guards to send out details. That's why there's this lag behind the grass being cut, using private contractors to try to get caught up on the grass.
That's city, though, right? They're not cutting grass in the county.
Yeah.
Whitworth is.
Not, not Whitworth, our, our folks.
Oh, okay, I agree.
Nobody's getting Whitworth, nobody's getting prejudice, because-
Yeah, okay, I misunderstood.
Yeah, nobody's getting prejudiced, but we are trying to, using private contractors to get the grass caught up on.
Well, I spoke with Rhodes Southern Head, and he said they're making their circle around, they're getting all the districts as quick as they can.
Correct, that's Bush hog. That's Bush hog. I'm talking about building grasses and all that stuff. To just let people know what's going on.
On this thing, I know we're supposed to be getting like three, three outside details from out there, which I know that we pay for one of them. Why don't we, it would be within the reins, like Clark County, over at, talk to the, Athens Clark County, County Administrator over there, because I know we got our van and everything else that we need in order to do something like this, and so we can work out a contract with them, and so they would be willing to furnish, furnish us with inmates to work in Hart County.
Clark County jail?
Clark County, Clark County CI, it's a county prison in Clark County. And I don't know who the city, know who the city county-
Don't that government does same department corrections, correct?
It is, but it's a county prison. And they use them all around Athens, Clark County over there.
I'd be glad to give them a call and see.
And I don't know who the county administrator is or, over there, but you could contact them and see if they'd be willing to, to let us get any inmate labor from them. And, you know, because they did the contract thing, it's just like what, what the state does. And I sit in working over in Athens, Clark County, but it is a county prison, so you need to talk to the county administrator of, of Clark County over there.
Is that where inmates stay twelve months or less or something?
I don't know about that.
Well, do we still have to pay Whitworth, even though we're not gonna serve?
No, if they don't, if they're not working, we don't pay.
Okay.
I don't know, we pay, our contract payment is actually for the one guard salary when she's, when that guard's out.
But I do know that warden over there, and you should, you might know that county or city administrator, whenever you talk to him. I know they got like, what is it, Athens Clark County Government?
Yes, it's probably the government.
So give them a call and see.
The other thing, part of this, before I want to put on the agenda, is we need to get a meeting with the Department of Corrections, because we still don't have a written agreement recorded in a courthouse about the details that Hart County's supposed to be getting.
We, we do, we do have an agreement.
We asked for that a while back.
We resign it every year.
I wanna make sure that it's recorded in a courthouse, that that was the agreement when the land exchange from the county to the state was done. And I've talked to Representative Powell, and he's probably the last person that was involved in that, Walter may have been, but we need to get that and get it recorded in the courthouse, so that they can't come up and say, we don't, we're not gonna provide these details, we're only gonna start, and they've tried this before.
Yeah.
To all they provide us with details we pay for, we're supposed to get two free details every day, and then we're paying for the third, and we get none. And I know it's a shortage of guards.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's the reason there's no becoming that. But again, that, that agreement you're talking about, it probably gotta be something that goes back to the negotiations of the property, for the prison.
Yeah, and it should be. Walter was supposed to be working on that, and I'll get back with him, but I wouldn't, I, we need to go ahead-
But as far as an agreement, we do sign an agreement for three crews every year.
Right, I understand. That's an annual agreement that they come to write. I wanna make sure that there's something documented, so that once we're all gone, that it's still there, because that was the original agreement.
If my memory serves me, we asked for the same thing you're asking for now several months ago.
We did, well, we had, got it.
We're still a little high.
Yeah, but that would be, that'd be something Walter, the Attorney's Office worked out, and that's something I can't pull off.
All right, is there all discussion?
We need on that.
Okay, we'll move on to new business, 13A, Kevin Patterson setback variance request, subdivision ordinance, C 68A 008 027. As we all know, we've got a ten-foot setback, and he is trying to, or the plans show there's an encroachment of 3.68 or something like that. I've read, I can't see this one, but, um-
I think I read, they have a-
Pass the setback, and so, what we answer tonight will be an answer that we'll have to live with, and answer again, and again, and again, so I just want everybody to take it under consideration. Yes, sir, you may speak.
You the representative?
He's representing the family.
You can come up and speak.
Let me pass this out. I need enough coffee to pour, maybe I should have made five. Second page, it's got the meat and potatoes on it. First page, it's got what you're looking at there. So you got that second page on, written up. I created another second page on it. I'm just gonna kinda go to this. So this is, I'm representing Curry Home Builders, we're local home builder, custom home builder out of Martin, Georgia, representing the owners of the property. Kevin and Heather, they're out of state, South Carolina, out of the country today, so. Quick story on this, we didn't initially pick this plan, or, no, we, we picked the plan, the clients picked the plan after, we got some bad information. We thought the setbacks were five, so we plopped the house on the lot. If you notice, you may have to go back to the other, the overview, there's also a, a twenty-foot variance, or not a twenty-foot easement, that consists, there you go, right there. Then we got a contendment on the property here, this guy here, and here. So initially, we were thinking we had a five-foot setback, we were able to tuck the corner of the house right into this, so we wanted to avoid this easement here, and everything was good. We got our survey back, so we sent a surveyor out to set, set pins, and also do topography before we sent all of this stuff over to an engineer to do all of our site work, drainage, septic, all of that. So this drawing was produced, actually, I created it, getting ready to send the information to the, to the engineer, and realized, oh, we got a problem here. So what, we got to thinking about, and we said, all right, let's go ahead and make a phone call, and this is really the justice, they understand the need, we understand as a builder, the need of the setbacks, and to keep the houses. Well, hoping on is that the fact that we've got this electrical line, easement here, that we have to contend with, is that, so I put on your second page, there are some dimensions on there.
That's a high load design, I hear.
Correct, overhead, and I think that is a twenty-three, if you look at the second page there, that kinda gives you a little highlight there of the shaded area in that is basically the section of the house that hangs off into that easement right there. So it's 3.68 feet. And that 3.68 feet would include six inches beyond the house, to keep the house off of the, you know, the granite, the granite variance if we got it by six inches, which would put the house 6.26 feet away from the property line, which, on the other side again of the house, and this is why we kinda set it up here, hoping that this proposal might, might see your grace on it, is that the distance on the other side you can see is 29.94 feet from the property line to the twenty-foot easement on the other property, on the front, and then 23.27 feet on the rear. So our hopes are, as we know, that we can't build within, we've got the setback that we're dealing with, but obviously, we're not trying to push the house into that easement at all. So we're trying to keep it out of the electrical easement and forward of that, thinking that the next door neighbor, whoever builds there, is also going to have, if they're smart anyways, they're going to keep their house out of that easement. Nobody's gonna wanna build in an easement, obviously, you can if you want.
You can't build on it, it's not wanton or not.
Okay, so, different municipalities, different down south, you could take the risk of building in it, but obviously, the risk you take is whoever has that easement could come in at any time and remove what you have to do, maintenance of that. So to your point, maybe that helps us even better, so we know that we won't have any building within the property line on that side, 29.94 up front, 23.27 in the rear, which gives, obviously, a distance between the homes. We'd end up with a greater distance there than we will on the other. So we're hoping that the fact that that, that electrical easement is there, helps to overshadow our proposed variance of 3.68 feet, you know, to bite into that setback on that side.
Where did you get your misinformation?
Misinformation was, I think, an assumption, which, you know what happens with an assumption. Number one, when we got the, the information from the client, we didn't get a copy of the entire plan, plot, which happens a lot to us as a builder, if there's a subdivision, and this happens to be in a subdivision as opposed to just lakefront property. We got a section of, and all we got was a lot. So we, we reacted accordingly. We're based out of Martin, okay? So we made some assumptions up there, a lot of the setbacks are five feet. So we assumed that it was gonna be five feet on the sides. They brought us a plan, we plopped it down on the lot, we said, yeah, we're good, we should be good. So they purchased a plan. Again, we sent a surveyor out to take all of our, to get all of the digital survey, set our stakes, and also run topo, because it's really important for us to, to get the topo reading, so we can send that to our engineer. Used to be, back in the day, we'd show up with machinery, you start pushing dirt, you know, and it's like, hey, when you get it right, you got it right. Well, we try to use technology the best we can right now. We have our, our engineers set the lot, or set the house on the lot, set our topo, set our proposed contours against existing contours, sort out all of our drainage, all of this stuff. So in the process of setting the house on the lot digitally, to send it to our engineer to do those steps, that's where it came to light. He said, well, we got a problem here. First, first call was to Kenneth Cash, he does all of our surveying for us, hey, where did you get your setback information? He called back, he said, where you got it? He says, is it accurate? Yes, it's accurate, it's ten foot. Okay, it is what it is. Call the owners, let them know what's going on. First thing I did, actually, was call your county, talked to Terrell, spoke to Terrell, asked him, what do I do here? He said, well, this is what you can do. So he added us, we submitted the information. It wasn't actually after we submitted the information, or at least the request, to get on tonight, where we actually sat down, we started studying this a little bit closer, and said, well, wait a minute here, you know, maybe we got a chance, because I, I've been through a variance before, you know, and unless there's some kind of hardship put on, you know, there's no reason to look at it. I get that. You know, the hardship on here is, we already bought the plan, we made a mistake, so not your problem to solve. What we're hoping is that the, the easement for the electrical helps to offset that, and if we, if we have to, what we'll do is we'll go get a new plan.
I think that's, I think that's probably where you're gonna end up, because what you're doing, definitely doing is setting a precedence in this subdivision, no doubt. You need probably setting one for half the builders in your county.
The encroachment's actually gonna be more than the three feet with the overhang of the roof, will it not be?
Well, the soffit, yes, but as I understand it, in all municipalities, the soffit does not matter within the, the building line. It's the, it's the wall of the house. The corners can hang over the property line, or, or every municipality-
We have to get a ladder truck or something back in there, something, some kind of emergency equipment or something.
And what, if you had to get, or?
Yeah.
Or you build it-
A ladder truck, for example.
Could a, could a-
That would get through there.
If that was, well, here's, here's the thing, is that when you take a ladder, you know, for emergency-
Yeah, fire truck, a fire truck.
For a fire truck?
Yeah.
Well, a fire truck could get down the other block, on the other side, because we can set back on it, so we really have to be-
That's why we got the ten, that's why we have the ten-foot setback, is so we can get in the area.
Well, I understand, but the other side, so what I'm saying, if you look at your, your detail there, he would have, actually, we got 29 feet clear from the property line to the easement line of the property next door, plus six feet that we're gonna be off that property line, so you're close to 35 feet, where the clearance there to get through there. The only reason why I thought that this was worth a shot here was the fact that the, the easement for the telephone pole resides right next to that property line. So that means that the structure on the, on the property next door cannot be built any closer to the house than that, than that easement, right? So if I can sneak into that three, you know, 3.68 feet, you still net out, even if the guy next door builds right on that line, we're going to be close to 35 feet away on that side. Now, the other side has got a ten-foot setback, so if the neighbor on that side builds right on the line, obviously, we're holding our, our house off six inches from the setback line, okay? If he holds his six, so you're gonna be, what, 21 feet? So we'll actually be tighter on the other side than we will on this side, just because it, you know, this easement happens to be there. So I'm hoping that the easement helps, you know? If we have to, here's what we'll do. If we have to buy a new set of plans, we'll buy a new set of plans, and we'll kick the house over 3.68 feet.
I think that's gonna be the best bet.
Okay, but you're only, we're saving 3.68 feet.
But we're also setting precedence if we're in advance.
I get that, I, I understand that, but you're setting precedence on, on a circumstance, on a condition, you know, that exists. So, and only on that condition, and I think that that would be easily argued to anybody that, you know, in this case, this is why we did it, and most people understand that. And again, I've been through, you know, in other municipalities, not here, variance, and I realize that there's always circumstances. So bottom line, that's the circumstances that are, that are surrounding it, and that's what I'm here asking for.
Motion, we deny the variance. Okay, we got a motion to deny the variance request.
Second.
I'm gonna second, back to Commissioner Teasley. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor?
You need to draw the back there.
Sure.
All right, next on the agenda is the UGA extension service request to increase counties' employee wage.
She texted me this afternoon, one of her children had an accident with her foot, and she wasn't gonna be able to be here, but I'll, I'll try to go over as much as I can. You'll see that letter I attached in the packet from-
Yes.
Bobby Smith, the district extending director, and short and long of it is, state of Georgia, for all their employees, put in a pay increase this year of $5,000. All right, see, one employee over there that is completely a county employee, is not a state employee, so they wasn't involved in the raise. The extension director, Bobby Smith, sent a letter requesting y'all give consideration to give this county employee a $5,000 raise. That's the shortest, can you?
I'm gonna make a motion, we deny the request. If we give it to one county employee, we gotta do it for every one of them. There's no way we can afford that.
Why does the educator get $6,000, and the rest of them just get $5,000?
Those are state setup salaries, I cannot- Those are state setup salaries, I cannot, I can't explain them for you.
I didn't know, I was reading through this the other day.
Yeah.
I give you a second. Got a motion and a second to deny the increase in salary.
Just based on the fact that we gotta be consistent with our county employees, and we can't give it to one, not give it to all, and we can't afford to do that.
Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? It's four of them. All right, next on the agenda is Legacy Link 2022 through 2023.
This is basically the same contract we sign, agreement we sign every year with them. The number of meals changes up and down as they're served out, but everything's in order, that's been for the last several years.
Make a motion, we approve. Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey, second by Commissioner Teasley. Any discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? It's four of them. All right, next on the agenda is Commissioner Teasley asked us to be put on the agenda's county cleanup date, I'll give him the floor at this time.
I know we haven't been, you know, getting our outside details, and I know, over the last several years ago, I don't know how long ago it's been, but I know that we had like a cleanup day like in Hart County, like where some of the clubs and stuff like that. And, you know, I know that, you know, Terrell was involved in it, and, you wasn't, I can't even remember who the county administrator was, but anyway, I remember us doing this, and it might be something that we wanna have a day for them to, you know, maybe, you know, collect trash, take it to the landfill, or wherever the case might be, with no charge or whatever, what do y'all think?
I don't have a problem with it, I think it's gotta be managed though.
Was that 2016?
It was somewhat, I can't remember when it was, but I remember when we had a cleanup day in Hart County, there was like several clubs involved in it.
Yeah, quite a few, I think.
And it was, I'm pretty sure it was like on a Saturday or, you know, something like that.
Yeah, and I can't remember all the clubs that was involved in it, but it was, in our part of it was, they could dump, dump all of them.
Yeah.
And I think we may have furnished bags, I'm not sure.
How do you think about leadership partners?
There was some downtown stuff.
Maybe, anyway.
But I, I think it's a good idea, because we don't have the resources out there picking up, and even if somebody wants to take something off their property and get rid of it, but I think we gotta manage it. Franklin County did something similar to that not long ago, and they were just overwhelmed, so I think we need to manage it, based off their lessons learned.
Yeah, again, all I, all I say to it, I need to talk to Greg to find out which would be the best days to do that, not overwhelmed out there, but we're open to whatever y'all wanna do.
You'll put that in the form of motion?
Yeah, I might put that in the form of motion to do that.
A second. Okay, I got a motion by Commissioner Teasley, a second by Commissioner Dorsey. Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for a vote, all in favor? It's four of them. Next on the agenda is public comment, and we welcome anyone that would like to make a public comment, if you would, to come to the podium and state your name. All right, if no one has any public comment? Oh, okay, come on.
Sorry, I'm gonna go ahead.
Yeah. I'm new in this county, and I'm proud to be here. The air is better here than in Cobb County. I'm a retired preacher, and I just wanna say to you gentlemen, that you need to be careful about what you do. You're here to represent the people, and you mumble up here so I can't hear, number one. Number two, you solve one problem, you create another. You need to see both sides of the coin.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
I like the fireman's comments. We pay attention to good sense.
All right, anyone else for a public comment? All right, if not, can we get a motion adjourned and go on to executive session, personnel?
Someone.
Second. We got a motion by Commissioner Dorsey...
Personnel?
Yes, that, personnel.
Personnel. And second by Commissioner Teasley. We'll call for a vote, all in favor? It's four of them.
Are you going to set a debate?
Yes.